Is everybody all set?
No.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Board members, I call your name. Could you please say present for the record. Trustee King.
Present.
Treasurer Luna.
Present.
Trustee Rufford.
Present.
Vice President McIntyre.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer Booze.
Present.
Secretary Perkins.
Present.
And myself, President Magnilla. Seven present, no absent. The board will not hear comments from the public. We ask that you keep your comments within the three minutes on matters of authority of the board, and do not address individuals by name. The presiding office of the board should have the right to limit the number of persons who may address the board. Please state your name and address. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone here from the public wish to speak? Board member in your package a legal opinion regarding the construction manager agent to give us more information on the CMA is Nicole Blocker from Plant Moran. Board member, I ask that you please hold your question until the end of the presentation. Ms. Nicole Blocker, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Actually evening.
Yes.
I'm Nicole Blocker with Plant Moran Real Point, the owner's rep for the project. I have my colleague here, Scott Smith, and we're going to, thank you very much, we're going to talk about the CM procurement. As you know, we are embarking upon the new high school project, and we have to hire additional professionals to the team. And the first, the next professional that we would like to hire is the construction manager. And the construction manager, they are a professional service firm, and they actually hire the subcontractors that actually physically build the work on the site. So the district through their legal counsel, Trum, selected the construction manager as an agency delivery method. And their role and responsibilities will be during the design phase to help us with, as the design is being developed, they'll help us with constructibility reviews, scheduling, and cost estimates. So at each design deliverable, they will provide an estimate to make sure that we're staying on track with scope, schedule, and budget. And they also coordinate and supervise the contractors that will be hired to actually physically build the high school and the athletic complex. The benefits of the CMA delivery method selected is that Flint Community Schools has already used this method through the ESSER program with Clark Construction. This approach was used for actually this building of the queue. It's recommended by your legal counsel at Trum. It's commonly used in K-12 districts. We oversee CMA at a lot of districts throughout the state. It is a professional service, so it is a qualified-based selection. And we will work with you, with the Flint Community Schools, with the selection of this. And they'll provide design phase assistance. Like I said, we won't have any surprises after the design is done. We'll be doing budget checkpoints throughout the whole design process so that we know where we are with the budget continuously throughout the design phase. So this is the excerpt from Trum Law that was sent out to the board by Superintendent Jones that talks about the school code law. That basically, to summarize this, you have this actual language, but to summarize it, we are required by school code law that all of the actual subcontractors and contractors that work on a project must be publicly bid, and they must be approved by the Board of Education before they are able to be doing the work on the site. The construction manager as an agency is a professional service, so according to this law, you do not have to publicly bid that work. You could privately bid it if you select it to do so. So the process that, for an RFP, a request for proposal, for selecting a construction manager, is that we, as your owner's rep, will prepare the RFP. And the RFP describes the scope, the schedule, the budget, all the constraints of the project so that everyone who decides to bid on this project knows what is expected of them at all times. Then we can share the RFP either publicly through, when you share it publicly, we recommend that you put it on the State Sigma website, your website, and in a local newspaper. But if you choose to do it privately, then you can select a few firms that are qualified to do the work, and then you can send out the RFP to them. That is the only difference in the process between the public and the private. The rest of this is all the same, and it's all transparent. We would collect the proposals at the due date time and evaluate those proposals. We will review them, and then through a scoring mechanism, and I will skip to that slide, through a scoring mechanism, we would have a criteria-based selection. So through the selection committee, that would be comprised of whoever the district want those individuals to be, to be actually in the selection process, score in the interviews, and make the decision on who is the right firm to build the school. That is strictly by the district. But after that shortlist, then we would bring the construction managers in for an interview, and all the questions will be asked. We have questions that we would come up together with before the interviews, and then we would ask those finalists for interviews, and they would come in and present. Those usually take about an hour each. And then you would select the right firm for you. And then we can negotiate contract terms. I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you, Nicole, and good evening. It's nice to be here. Thank you. There we go. So our proposed timeline for this RFP is as follows. We'd like to issue it out on Thursday of this week, the 13th. We plan to have a pre-bid meeting with interested bidders early next week on the 17th. December 1st, we would have the proposals due. We'd spend the next couple of days going through the proposals, sharing those out, and working through that criteria-based selection that Nicole talked about, again, with the idea of shortlisting some folks to bring in for interviews. We've got the 4th tentatively set aside, but we need to coordinate those dates and times with the selection committee. And then that gives us some time from when the interviews are up through the 15th, when that recommendation letter would be due to the board, to work through further discussions about who should be recommended. We'd like to work through any kind of contract terms that may come up. Most of these folks probably will have some objections to the terms that are proposed, and there's always a process of working through those with legal counsel and the recommended bidders. And then with this schedule, we'd be coming to you guys on the 17th of December for a review of that recommendation and approval, with the hopes of having a construction manager onboard by the end of the calendar year. And just some quick points on the CM selection. What we'd be bringing to you on the 17th of December under this proposed plan would be the original contract, which generally includes the pre-construction services and the construction-based services, the staffing that's involved with that. We'd also be establishing the fee percentage to which they would apply to the cost of the work, which will be determined at a later date as we get farther into the construction and design, and also the bidding. And then we should establish an initial budget for general conditions. These are things like fencing to secure the site, temporary toilets, temporary roads, all kinds of things in office, things you need to support the construction of the building itself. That would be step one with the initial contract, and then we'd be coming back and amending it throughout construction. The first one would be after the demolition abatement work is bid, we would be kind of computing that construction manager fee based on the cost of that work. We'd also be coming back later in the calendar year of 2026, after the main construction bids for the high school itself are completed. So we see this coming in a couple of different phases at this time. And then, again, the construction manager will be available for ongoing progress reports. If there's amendments, those will be presented and reviewed with you guys in advance. So the construction manager is obviously a really big component of this process, and we'd like to work towards getting them onboard to help see this project through.
Okay, so the question on the table for the board is, which way would you like to proceed as it pertains to having, option one would be the open bids where anyone, anyone in America or anywhere could bid on this project? Or would we do an RFP process, which would be option two, where you have recommended CMs that has been doing this work in this area for a long while? So that, those are, we need answers to those questions tonight, to that question tonight, excuse me, to that question tonight. We're of no opinion on this as it pertains to, we can do either way, but we want to make sure that we're taking your guidance and leading, you're leading us in this decision-making.
So my understanding, Mr., that we can use the same process we used when we used to ESSER. We did not go out and do an RFP for the CMA.
No, what you did with Clark Construction is the board listened to the presentation and decided that you wanted Clark Construction, and you voted, and we brought Clark Construction on, which was totally legal.
Yes.
You know, that's what we did with Clark. Yes, ma'am.
So the construction manager would be using an RFP from their choosing in order to do the work? That's one possibility?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, this, this is a RFP that we have created within conjunction with the administrative staff to hire a construction manager based on the project information. So you are putting something out there, the district, for construction managers to respond to. So it's not the construction manager putting one out there. It's Flint Community Schools putting out an RFP, asking for construction managers to bid on your project, provide a proposal for your project.
Trustee.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Trustee King.
Nicole, could you, could you explain, so the CMA is basically what we have currently, we use Clark, right?
Yes.
So when we did, like this campus, for example, for the masonry work and all the plumbing, the electrical, and the building piece, we had the RFP of that for individual contractors all around. But this, so what you're asking here is the person that manages the overall work of the project, right?
Correct. It's the entity that manages all of the work. That's what we're asking. Do you want to bid that publicly or privately?
Got you. So let's say we choose option one or two, whatever option is, right? We still have, from the plumbing, the electrical, the masonry work, and all the building pieces, we'll be RFPing that out, that work for Central Campus, though, right?
Correct.
So whatever option we choose for the CMA piece, we still be RFPing for individual, like minority businesses around the community to still bid on the work. But so in this case, this is more so the manager of that total project, so similar how we did for this queue in that case.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And to bid out the plumbers, the masonry, and all that, by K-12 law, you are required to put a public bid out for that work.
Exactly. So just in this case, CMAs, you don't have, you're not required to do a public.
You do not, because it's a professional service.
Hundred percent. That manages the work.
That's right.
But required to allow for community bidding or anybody around to do that.
Correct.
And the president just stepped away, so, and I did have, I was in the queue, but does anyone, would you like to?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Rufford.
Thank you. I have it, I have been definitely vocal about this, and what I appreciate in this opinion that wasn't included, if you go to the last page, B.O.G. Clark sums it up with, even though bidding can be time-consuming, some school districts decide to voluntarily bid out services to solicit the broadest array of bidders, promote transparency, and encourage competition. It's not a matter of it being a law or being required, it's a matter of being transparent. It's a matter of being open. It's as if this is being crammed down.
Point of information.
Yes.
Are you aware that Plant Moran is just presenting?
I understand.
The law, and that they're asking the board to decide whether they want?
I understand that. I'm reading what the opinion said that was left out.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, the board should be a part of the entire process, not just after you establish the manager of the entire thing. I'm not comfortable having someone else make that decision, just like Clark came before the board and did a presentation, and the board selected based on what the board saw. So that's my rationale behind this. Though the law does not require it, it does promote transparency, and it makes, it ensures that the board get the best, the best out there so that the board can have a say so.
Point of order.
Sure.
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm not making a motion. No, I'm sharing information that wasn't shared on the screen.
Would anyone else like to, to speak? As it relates to what we're talking about, so, okay, you're taking over.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So now, now, yeah, okay, let's, let's, I don't want to waste time. I don't want to waste your time. I don't want to waste the board's time or the public's time. I don't think anyone on the board is pushing back against, I think we're just being presented with information, and really appreciate you going, bending over backwards, really to present the law, which the board should be well aware of on its own, without your very helpful input. So at this point, I think it's really up to the board. We just need to make a decision. So if anyone is willing to present a motion either way, I hear Trustee Rufford being very vociferous about her opinion and yet not willing to make a motion, so I think in the spirit of collegiality and camaraderie, I make a motion that we put out the RFP bid publicly, even though we do not have to. I mean, I get it. I mean, I think everyone on the board gets it. I think it's, okay, so let's just do it. And I think that's what the public wants. I hear that's what, unless I hear to the contrary, that's what my colleagues want, and I'm not opposed to it. I think it's good democracy, so I propose that we make the RFP for the manager, the construction manager, public.
Do you also you make a motion?
Yes. And then...
Is that the correct verbiage that you need for that?
We need option one or two. So, yeah, so...
So option one is an RFP.
Both of them are RFPs. One is public. One is private.
So I made a motion for the...
Public.
And that's option one?
That's option one.
For option one, for a public RFP for the construction manager.
And there was support.
And it was supported by Trustee Rufford.
So they've been proffering, moving second and supporting. Because you made a motion.
Yep. Any discussion?
And is there any discussion prepared? Trustee King.
Yeah, Nicole, can you bring up back that timeline again for me? Okay, cool. Can you keep that right there? Thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Trustee Rufford.
I guess, I'm sick of, I don't care about that timeline. We, as a board, we're responsible for everything. One of the things I really would ask everyone that works with Flint Community Schools, as I'm on this board, get direction from the board before you put stuff in writing, because that makes us go backwards. Because that timeline now is not going to work, because as you, the other one I saw had Flint Schools was to be determined, the one I saw.
Okay.
And now I don't, the 13th is tomorrow, so now that it didn't go this way, we're going backwards. I mean, this is one of the things I had stressed, I don't want us going backwards when we do it the right way the first time. It's seven members that were elected by this community that makes the decision, not anyone else. So when it comes to putting timelines together, you have the board input prior to putting timelines together, because at any given moment, the board can decide that doesn't work for the district, and now you gotta rip it up and start all over. We're too far, we're just, we've come too far to be doing things like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee King.
Yeah, so the reason why I asked for this timeline, because tomorrow, so assuming that we approve the public bidding, Nicole, if I'm right, you still would issue RFP tomorrow, right?
Yes, we would put it in the, on Sigma, the paper, and on your website, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, honestly, the timeline is okay to me because of, I mean, we're doing the public bidding, it's the 12th, we approve it tonight, it can be posted tomorrow. I don't see any, like, something that we did a monkey wrench in more so, more so to say. If we did private or, you know, public, this would still be the timeline, similar, right? So, yeah, okay, cool. I just want to make sure I don't see this timeline.
Is anyone else want to speak before I speak?
I see clarification.
We...
Clarification. Did I not, but you want to make sure I understand, point of information, am I understanding correctly that Plant Moran will pick the construction manager?
No, they do not pick the construction manager.
Okay, so when it says that, I'm talking about professional services also, you are, that's what I'm talking about. And that's why I want to make sure everyone know, that's my preference. The law does not require professional services to be bidded out.
CMA of the professional service.
Correct. My ask is like Trum stated on the last page, even though bidding is, by law, it's not required. However, some school district decide to voluntarily bid out services to solicit the broader array of bidders, which promotes transparency and encourage competition. That's true.
Oh, pardon, pardon. Yes, pardon, question, and we are trying to act and then we lead into something else.
No.
So proceed, Mr. Charles.
So what's on the floor is exactly what you're saying. The private, the private bidding is not on the floor. What's on the floor is the public bidding that you're saying. Either one you decide to go with, that timeline is still on the table. But what's on the, on the floor is publicly bid this out tomorrow.
Okay.
Transparency.
Okay.
That's what's on the floor.
That's what I understood.
The question would be, how, once we put, you guys trying to put this out, timelines is important. We must be, this is important. It always has. It's just not our first rodeo in doing this stuff. And when we selected a CMA, we had timelines to meet, and we didn't do it, we did it private. We didn't put out a, for a professional RFP. Now, the CMA have to do the RFP when it comes to hiring construction companies and all this other stuff, but because of these timelines, I'm saying that we should stick to it as private. It's their public, because the public would know, and rather than sending out a RFP, we can stick to the same process as we did, we know that works, and we can then be insured that we start getting our guidelines. We are not changing these guidelines because we in this phase from day one, and we have plenty of time to talk about a lot of stuff. So we are not, should be trying to change these dates. The question is...
Point of information.
What's your point?
When was the entire board informed of this?
So the question would be...
Point of information. When was the entire board?
You have to find that out.
Why do I have to find it out?
So what I'm telling you...
Point of information.
Your point of information did not until I finished the floor.
Point of, you, point of information.
What's your point now?
When was the whole entire board informed of this?
You will have to find that out. I'm trying to...
No, you, you're the president.
No, I'm the president, but you'd like to sell seven, four. Point, we're done, Arden. Let's proceed.
Okay.
Go ahead, Trustee King. Trustee Paul.
Point is, point of information is a privileged motion, however, does not require a response necessarily, just a privileged motion to ask a question.
The answer is the last board.
Okay. So the motion on the floor, do we want to do a RFP public? If you don't want to do it public, then just no. If you want to do it public, the answer is yes. We are having a discussion. I, from my experience, we brought the CMA to us to board, and we had information about the CMA. We know who the CMA was, who did the work, and we voted. How much time consumption is it going to take to send out a RFP immediately? We're just talking about a CMA professional, and we have professional people know who we can select and who we will select. So the question would be, we're not going to spend any time on this. Do you want it to go public? And I would do it by roll call vote if there's no more discussion. If you have a question, please.
So if we vote yes, public, can we use the same timeline?
Yes.
Yes.
So roll call, are you there?
I'm just confused why there's a discussion when we're just voting on a, whether it's going to be public or not.
Because discussing always comes after a motion, and they have, that's the right and the privilege of a board to make a discussion. Now we would go for a roll call vote. Let me ask one question. So if it, so if we say no, then it goes public? If we said no, we would go back to the private.
Oh, okay. We're voting on whether to make the RFP public.
And that's all we need to be concerned with.
Okay.
That's it. So if you don't want it to be public, you said no. If you want it to be public, say yes.
Okay.
Okay? Roll call vote. Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Luna?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee, um...
Yes.
Yes, Booze? Yes. Trustee Rufford? And myself, yes. Six yes. The motion passes. Seven yes. The motion passed. And now, turn the floor over to trustee Rutherford for the human resource portion of the agenda.
I would like to call the human res. I would like to call the human resource committee of the whole meeting to order. I will now call upon superintendent Jones to present action to the board.
Thank you, trustee Rutherford. I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve resolution 1.14 Personnel Recommendations.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve item 1.14.
Is there support? It's been properly moved by trustee King and supported by, uh, Vice President McIntyre. Is there any discussion? It was you? Oh, trustee Booze. Is there any discussion? Send, go ahead. I'm sorry, um, Vice President McIntyre, go ahead.
Yes, um. I guess my question would be, or my discussion would be, I thought we were trying to right-size the district. So, I'm, I'm unclear, can somebody explain to me the rationale for adding a new member of Congress?
One member?
Pardon?
Your time is running short.
Yes.
It's. Oh, you would like to, I can't too, but go ahead, no, go ahead, I'm gonna let you speak. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone, so, um.
Introduce yourself so people know who you are.
Okay, my name is Dr. Natoya Coleman, Chief Innovation Officer for Flint Community Schools, leader of the Director of Academics. And so, this position, this Congress position is a School Improvement Coordinator for Doyle Rider. Is that what you're speaking about, that particular position?
Yes.
Uh, F, once schools reach a certain student population, we have been working to advocate for school leaders on ways to support them in providing, uh, resources for focusing on academic, uh, trends and things that need to be done in order to address the needs in that building that, uh, Doyle Rider, I believe, is at about 380 students at this point in time, the student population. And so, at that particular point in time, it, it creates the necessity for a person to provide that level of support to this school leader on how to implement interventions and supports through Title I to address the academic needs and concerns in that building. And so, that's the school, that's the role of the school improvement coordinator, which is the Congress position that's on the docket for this particular board packet.
How is that paid?
Through Title. Title I, yes.
So, can you, I, I know exactly what a school improvement coordinator is. And yet, our enrollment's declining, this is not even a high school. The last, everyone knows where I stand with the last school improvement grant that we got and how we eliminated anything remotely improving school curriculum. I'm not, we're, we're, I thought that we're trying to right-size the district. So, my question was, how is this right sizing? Not, what is the coordinator and why do we need it? Because as far as I'm concerned, we don't need another administrator, we don't need another member of Congress with the district getting smaller. So, please justify to me why we're hiring somebody as a member of, we were working really hard to make it smaller. How can we justify an eighty, $2,000 salary when our teachers aren't even making half that? Uh, it sounds like we need more teachers in the classrooms and we need more enrollment. I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm confused. So, yeah, the, please don't answer me with, and I don't mean you, I'm not addressing you, this is not a personal thing, this is not personal to anybody, but please don't say, this is title money, that's just how it's being paid. I'm, I'm tired of that. Okay, we're talking about, right, I, I don't understand the overall picture here and what we're doing with, so, the school population going down, with our enrollment going down, and now we're adding another administrator. So, I'm not for this, like, in general. It's gotta be a really, really good reason, and just because we have title money is not a good reason.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, um, Perkins?
So, um, can certified teachers be paid out of the title funds also?
Yes.
Not full, not full salaries?
It's like mixed.
Not full salaries?
No.
Can you explain that further, um, Mr. Jones?
So, a portion of, of our teachers' salaries come out of, um, bu, uh, title funds for intervention work that they're doing, but their full day is not intervention work. It can't be because they need to teach the curriculum at hand. So, so, the answer to that is, is no. The, the other part I will add to that is I don't know that I can give an, an answer, trustee McIntyre, that you would be satisfied with, but I will give you the answer of the reason why I believe and we believe we need, uh, school improvement chairs, um, to support the academic work in the district is because we do have academic issues, uh, at every level, pre-K, pre-K through 12th grade, and our scholars do need more support, uh, than students that are not at risk. And so, this is a space where, um, to improve academic, uh, one of the areas where we're trying to help and improve academics in the district, in schools, is having the support that the principals need. The principals are, are not only observing, they're doing discipline, they're ensuring that the school runs, the infrastructure of the school runs, and they need those supports. Uh, in inner city, we need more supports than not. Uh, and this is one of those, this is one of those key supports that we found that is absolutely effective and needed, uh, for our principals as they take on more students than they have. Doyle Rider being a school that we just changed the infrastructure, uh, did new upgrades, more students are coming in, we have a new principal there, so, trying to give those supports so that they can support pre-K up to sixth grade is the reason why we're trying to fill that position. I don't know if that gives you what you want, but that is the reasoning.
But why Congress? Like, why isn't this a different type of position?
Well, Congress is where they lay. After we worked with Congress with the negotiations and we did a lot of work in that space, and positions were taken out of Congress, this was one of the positions that, uh, Congress asked and negotiated that stayed in.
Perkins? Oh, I'm sorry. President McIntyre. I mean, President McNeil, sorry.
Uh, Dr. Coleman, you was at Doyle Rider, and you been, uh, from Doyle Rider how long?
I was at Doyle Rider for four years.
Okay, those, uh, how long you been away? Because we got a new.
This is my first year away from Doyle Rider.
So, wouldn't it be to me that, uh, is there assistant principal over here?
There is not an assistant principal at Doyle Rider right now.
Wouldn't that to me would be your next concern, would be assistant principal? With this type of salary like this here, and so, I know you're saying that you need this here, we also need assistant principal. And we also have a problem here, enrollment is going down, the funds is getting short, and we're gonna have to be a little bit creative and coming in here and dropping these speakers, uh, like this in front of us when we should have been focused on more, in my opinion, is assistant principal. So, your principal doesn't have to carry the load that they are carrying. And I'm kind of grieving, I know this is important, uh, as well, but we look like to me, we need, even though it's Title I, I think we need to really rethink about how we are spending this money. Keep in mind, board, we got two years to pull this out, pull this, this district out. And we got to be a little bit creative. We can't keep doing the same old thing, the same old way, getting the same old result. Uh, Doyle Rider's scores are, uh, horrific, are just down the tube, and along with the other ones. And this here person right here probably is not gonna too much make any difference. I just think that, uh, we need to focus on, uh, and nothing's saying bad about this person, I know this person, I just think this person would have been an excellent person, he missed assistant principal. But I just think that we need to look at and downside, uh, what we are doing and how we are doing it. Nothing bad about it, but I know it's Title I, but I, look like to me, we would be, just like it's Southwestern, it was just a snapper thing, and you got assistant principal. And, uh, this Doyle Rider's sitting over here with a principal, 380 some kids, doing a great job from when I hear, and don't have assistant principal to even help out with some of these things.
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
So, we, we have been, uh, we, we're constantly interviewing for assistant principals. We had to, uh, we've been doing that since July, um, actually, interviewing. We, we have not been able to, um, find the appropriate candidate, uh, for assistant principal with the qualifications. But I beg to differ a little bit when it comes to supports. We need more interventions that work. Uh, we, we're, we're program evaluation is the one that, uh, going through program evaluation with consultants that don't. But we, we are in an inner-city district with students that need more supports. And when it comes to the academic supports, we, we, we need to be heavy with the academic supports. Less would mean that the folks that you have in classrooms will have to take on more work. Uh, we need more math intervention teachers, we need more reading intervention teachers. So, we, we do need these supports, um, as it pertains to academics. One student, um, sometimes need a one-on-one, uh, sometimes need the teacher in the classroom plus a paraprofessional. Many of our teachers, I believe, that will stand here and say, and say, we don't have enough, uh, capable bodies in the building to support the academics. I, I do understand the, the mindset of the right sizing, but I think in this space of the academic supports needed is, this is not the place where we're trying to right-size. We're trying to right-size as it pertains to our, um, our fiscal responsibility around, uh, infrastructure and making sure that we have the right people in place and we have, we're using the enough infrastructure. I think in the academic space, we need more support and more help, more training, and, and more, uh, more of these folks to help with the daily work. So, I, I hear where we're coming from. I think we're trying to get to the same place in the conversation, but I think we're thinking about it a little bit differently. But I think that these supports are important, and the principals will probably stand and say the same thing. Now, where they fall is not a matter of we choose to put them in Congress or we choose to put them in the teachers' union or what have you, that's just where they fall. And their, their pay scale is based on what we agreed to in their negotiations. It is not something that we just say, hey, we're gonna pay you this. This is the pay scale we have to work within, that we agreed on in the negotiations.
Point of information?
Go ahead, your point.
Does the job title have to be coordinator, though? Or could it be something different so that it doesn't have to be a Congress position?
We, we would have to get a new position approved from the state if we wanted to change the, uh, the title. However, if the work is the same as what the job title states that is school improvement chair, it would be a violation of that contract.
All right, we gonna leave that there. Dylan, go ahead.
Yeah, so, just a question, then.
Trustee Luna? No, no, I got, I, I got this. No, no, it was Dylan, go ahead, Dylan.
Okay. So, just a question and then maybe a suggestion. So, because this is title money, this position will not have a bearing on our actual budget when it comes to the deficit rate, it won't. So, it won't, it won't affect the budget, okay. So, I, I find this person won't act, it won't add to an overhead expense that affects the operational deficit, right?
Well, the entire position is paid for out of title. But here, to, to answer you even further, is if you want to continue to get your title funds at the level you're getting them, you must spend the money. And if you don't spend this money, they're gonna start taking money back from you.
That's where I was getting at.
So, it's a double-edged sword of when we say we don't need positions and we need to do this and that. Well, I also have to spend this money too if we want to continue to get 16, 17 million dollars in this district.
So, the money, yeah. So, the money has to be spent, and if we don't spend it, restless for, for losing funds. But two, this has no bearing on us right-sizeing this specific position.
So, so, not, yes, so.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
You're right, so, answering you and, and to help with that, I want to say this. You, you don't do it, you don't, you're not winning anything in any way. You don't do it, you're just saying no.
That's what I was getting at.
You're not, you're not doing anything to support the district with a no. But to do it, you're doing two things, we're giving the support to the school, plus you're spending the money that you're supposed to be spending. Uh, so, when the state says, um, you did not utilize 60%, 70% of your funds, so, we're not gonna give Flint this amount of money. We don't know what we're gonna need in two years. So, to have all of our money come back to us is important, too.
And to conclude kind of my comments, I'll give with you offline, but I think it is worth, uh, a, a, maybe a special meeting for finance to go over enrollment, because number one, you know, we don't know what the capacity utilizations are at each of our schools, at least we don't. We had, we had a report from Plant Moran, Pressa, three years ago. But I think it's worth revisiting that conversation so we can say, hey, you know what? Doyle Rider's full, our DTM is not full, and how we can better tailor our recruitment efforts geographically to those specific schools that aren't full yet. But we can talk about that in a special meeting.
Thank you. Secretary Perkins?
I, I've been hearing you all talk in the academic realm about interventionalists. Do we have any way to hire some of those? Because it seems like that's what's really needed. And can some of those people be paid out of the Title I, interventionalists? Because I know they specify where the children are failing, and it would just seem to make sense to me.
So, we want more intervention teachers. However, one of the things that you, we have to make sure we're doing before intervention is trying to make sure we have certified teachers in classrooms. And so, we do want more intervention teachers, but the teachers that are coming in the door are certified teachers, and we must make sure that we have certified teachers in classrooms rather than guest teachers or substitutes. So, the answer to your question is, yes, we can and we will, and those are pre-approved, approved positions that are already out there. We do have some intervention teachers, but we need more. However, you have to, the, the intervention teacher can't really totally do their job if they have a sub every day in a, in a classroom. Does that make sense? Like, if, if there's subs coming in week by week, then the work that the intervention teacher is going in there to do is very, it, it becomes more difficult because you don't have a consistent teacher in the classroom that's, that's a certified teacher.
I understand that, I just think we ought to have more intervention teachers that are certified. So, if, do we have enough certified teachers that are already teaching that know how to do the intervention? That's my question, I guess.
Okay, point, all right, any, um. King?
I just have a question. I mean, could this money, this title money be used for something else? Like, um, for intervention, no, intervention specialist, specialists, or just? I, I didn't hear you answer trustee Perkins' question. I heard you say that we need teachers, yes, 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 yes. Can this money be used, this title money be used for intervention services? Say, for example, like, we've been looking at green education, doing individualized, uh, tutoring service and intervention with, you know, and looking at mathematics. Can this money, I don't, and, and, and you haven't answered my question about how adding another.
Point of order, point of order. This is, this discussion is very good, but this is where a subcommittee meeting would take place. So, I, I would strongly suggest that if there's this much conversation, maybe we could just pull out this position and table it so we can move forward. But I, I don't want to make that recommendation, but however, we're continuing to go deeper into, and it just sounds, everyone's comments are legit, worth to beat, but I, I think it would be who of us. But I, I think it would be who of us to allow Mr. Jones and his administration to be able to answer you all's question and be able to give you data supporting it. Mr. Jones with that.
Absolutely, I'm willing to have this conversation further, but we, we, we are obligated to fill MDE. We are obligated to fill vacant teacher positions in the classroom before we can do intervention services, meaning add. So the answer to the question is yes, we could, we have plenty of money to do both. You don't, we don't want, we're under utilizing the funds. We're not spending 100% of title funds. So what, there's no reason why we can't have a school improvement chair and intervention teachers. They're already approved for us to have. We just need the people. So there's, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're not bringing something else in and losing out on something else. It's all there for us to take, to get. We can do all of it. We just need the people to come in to do it. We, we're.
Point of information? Is the superintendent aware that that's exactly what I asked him not to do was to use, hey, we've just got title money so we can spend it, argument? But to give me actual legitimate reasons why we need another administrator?
So noted. She's already talked, this will be sec, she's talked before your turn. Trustee King, go ahead. Trustee King, she's already spoken.
Okay, got you. So Dr. Coleman, can you tell me how many students we have in that building, uh, Door Rider?
Three eighty.
Three eighty.
380 students, right? And currently, how many administrators do we have in that building?
A principal.
Just one principal. Mr. Jones, we said we're actively hiring for an assistant principal for this building, right?
Yes.
So what is the threshold of students that a building receive an assistant principal?
We, we have normally, the threshold has been around 250 to 300 students. That's been our threshold. However, you also have to account for these situations you have with scholars as it pertains to special education as well and pre-case services needed in the building. That can vary.
Yep.
Depending on the struggles and the issues that the staff is dealing with in the particular school.
Okay. So with that being said, what, what school building, what elementary? I know the question, answered the question, but I just want you to say this for the record piece. What school building has, which elementary school building has the most students?
Uh, DTM.
DTM has how many administrators?
I want to say two?
One. We have, they have, they are in the process of hiring an assistant principal at this time.
Yes.
So there's an approved assistant principal position there and we're hopeful that very soon we will be bringing an assistant principal on board there.
How many students do DTM has?
About 390.
390, okay. And I only ask these questions because if, if, if we zoom out for a moment, if I'm a building leader inside of a school with 390, 90 kids and then I still have to have a staffing issue with, I don't have full certified staff, do we have a full certified teachers at Door Rider?
We are closer.
Closer.
Than we were when I was principal there.
Each, each school building is closer?
We're all closer.
Are we 100% there yet?
We are not 100% anywhere.
So with that being said, right, it is, I, I think it's, I can see our point of view, but also I think we should give support to the building leaders inside the building. If I'm one principal, I have to do discipline, I have to do community engagement pieces. I have to do, you know, parent, parent engagement with parent conversations and, and all that comes with it. Then still try to meet our expectation around academics, right? So I, I think it's important for us to provide support to the building leader that's there. Even hearing that we're going to have a principal, assistant principal position hopefully soon for Door Rider would be excellent because if we have 390-ish at DTM, it'd be right to have a principal, assistant principal at Door Rider. But also, Mr. Jones, would this be the first school improvement coordinator at elementary? No. So we've done this before?
Yes.
Cool. I, I don't, I, I think this would be helpful for that building leader. And then thinking big picture too, right? Assuming that Door Rider and all of our school buildings have the right amount of administrators to help move the metrics around our, you know, our math, our literacy and all those good things. Plus you have a certified full staff and then we have the expectation of the district that's we putting on them. We want our students to excel and have academic excellence. I mean, what, what more can we ask? But I mean, when I hear Mr. Jones you saying though, we still need people, correct? So we have to fill certified teachers role, then we fill interventionist role. We have, we have a handful of interventionists in this district currently, right?
We have a few. We don't have many.
Not more than, I don't think we have more than 10.
Okay. So yeah, I, I'm for keeping this position here. I, I think there's a larger conversation we can have as a board to give more clarity and understanding going forward. Similar to what Trustee Luna mentioned about having the finance meeting explaining, explaining that. Because as we did shrink though, school buildings still reach capacity. We may be declining enrollment, but also you still have school buildings at 390, 380. We, we did, you know, unfortunately closed two buildings. They went to Door Rider. That don't mean that they can't, the staff couldn't get support, in my opinion. So I think there's opportunity to look at that and, and have conversation around it. I think in tandem with the finance piece, having an HR conversation around how many teachers we have certified, you know, that kind of percentage, plus who's all in the building and have that conversation in tandem with that to match with finance, I think would be helpful for the board to have a conversation around and seeing what academic support there is. Because you know, as we talked about academics consistently, what, what do we have in the district? And I think that may be helpful for alignment purposes. Thank you.
Trustee Booths.
I would like to know, Ms. Coleman, what is her role and, what would her, this person's role and responsibility be?
Yes, so I, yes ma'am. So the school improvement coordinator helps to lead the charge in terms of looking at the school data. That would be their primary responsibility is having a grasp of the academic data for the school and then, and then developing an intervention plan for the school in terms of how to address the school's goals for their data. It is providing professional developments for teachers to support them with achieving the school-wide goals. They facilitate the PLCs, professional learning communities, so that teachers can work together on lesson planning and collaborative planning around particular standards that are identified in the data that need to be addressed by grade level. They support the principal with identifying any instructional needs and providing coaching for teachers. If there are substitute teachers that need support in lesson planning development or if there are any teachers who have struggles in their instruction and they need additional support, the school improvement coordinator is there to provide those levels of support in terms of addressing those instructional needs. And then anything that is related to instruction and data that is neat, that is identified by the principal, the school improvement coordinator will facilitate that. And that is the reason why it is sort of an administrative level. That's why they're in Congress, because it requires a certain level of experience and expertise to be able to provide that coaching to teachers at the various levels.
Okay, how many teachers was she overseas?
The Doyle Rider currently has, I believe they have, when I was there, they had 13 classrooms. So I'm going to say anywhere between 13 and 15 classrooms that the school improvement coordinator would be supporting.
Okay, all of them certified?
No, all the teachers at Doyle Rider are not certified.
And how many certified?
I don't have that number at this present moment, but I can definitely get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, this is our second round. I want to say President McNeil had her hand up, Vice President McIntyre and Treasurer Luna. So we're going then Secretary Perkins, so.
I want to thank all you guys for your comment. This is also from Mr. Jones and Maryton, the coach, you're here as well. What type of mechanism, evaluation tool do you guys have in place to measure the success of the individuals that's doing this job? Because you list out a lot of great things that we are concerned about. And you can, I'm just composed of that. A student can go, Door Rider go from kindergarten to fourth grade. And no one is catching these students when they really need the help. And this is what these people, individuals are supposed to be. Two things I'm concerned is, is the principal is, you know, can work with this person and is the principal can also can work with their assistant principal, the AP. We have to realize to say, hey, this is a lot of money. What tool that you can bring to the board to show this board that this program is working, this person is doing? I've been here five years and the scores are going this way. And the people's salaries is going up here. And this is a conversation could be for another day, but right now we on this conversation. This problem right here is the qualification is there. However, for me as a board, I would like to start to looking at evaluation tools. We hiring people, but we got to find out, can you have checkpoints, Mr. Jones? Is this working? Is they doing this here? Is they doing this? Do you know that there's a third grade is not being proficient? You send the NWE, you send the, these are the MCF three. That's when intervention really should be coming in. Don't wait till that kid gets to the ninth grade, but that's a different story. I am supporting this for the simple fact that I know that it is just a part of, of the process. I was on 30 or 40 minutes phone with MDE training me on the Title I in this process.
Point of order.
I'm talking, what's your point?
Next, President McIntyre.
No, no, I have to finish.
President, you're, you're, you're not germane to the subject.
It is germane to this subject. As I was saying, we have a different.
President McNeil, this is, this is my meeting.
We need to look at this measurement.
I, I need you to govern yourself accordingly.
How do we measure the success of this program? I have no problem in passing this, but Mr. Jones, in the future, we need to have some type of way to measure this.
President McNeil.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, let's, 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 let's do some good, some good communication.
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting on you to do.
This right here, this meeting, the subject is, is in regards to the approval of the recommendations from Superintendent Jones and his staff. Not data. We got to stay germane to it. Came up to have a meeting, that can happen. So moving forward, if it's not germane to this, I will end it. Vice President McIntyre?
So I, I would really, I, I think we need a finance meeting and I would also really appreciate an academic meeting because I'm, normally our packets have who's been interviewed and their resume and, and other pertinent details, the job description. There's nothing in here. And I know that we got this ahead of time, but you know, I, I, huh? Okay, just, I get distracted very easily. So if you like are talking and muttering under your breath and making side comments, like it, it kind of takes me off the train. I still don't, I, I, it's where, we need an update on, on the restructuring, the re, the right sizing of our staffing. This isn't commensurable to right sizing the finances or the, the construction of the buildings, but it is, it is somewhat related. So I wonder if we could pull this particular position and vote on it separately. I wonder if we could make like a friendly amendment, because we're in the middle of discussion on a motion. So, and I know that Trustee King made a motion. Because I'm, I'm really concerned the more I hear about this. As a teacher myself, adding an administrator to, to help with deliverables and metrics sounds absolutely awful. It, it, it never helps instruction. And I would like more information on this. And again, I'm confused about how adding a layer of administration is going to help instruction. So that's my question. It still hasn't been answered. It's been, there, there's been, you know, discussions about how title money can ask to be spent, which I said from the outset, please don't feed me that line because I'm going to, I, I knew it was going to happen. So can we pull this and then vote on it separately? Because, well.
We're in a discussion.
We're in the middle of a discussion on a motion. So I, I wonder if we can make like a friendly amendment. And so I'm looking to Trustee King maybe to help facilitate that so it's not a big deal.
I'm sure Mike might go next.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'll be joining President McNeil in supporting this existing motion. I will say from an equity perspective, our black and brown kids at that school deserve it at this position. I, I taught K5 for almost six years, a certified teacher in, in the classroom. I know for a fact that we need interventionists, we need school improvement coordinators. And you know what? We need Green to help us out too. This is all part of the puzzle. For us not to do that is going to deny our students who would need that equity, especially our black and brown students, many of whom don't speak English as a first language. Having that support in the school is essential for their success. Guess what? We're not there right now, but this is part of the puzzle to get there from an equity perspective, but also from an academic perspective. So I'll be supporting this tonight with President McNeil.
Perkins.
I, I, I've really had a headache this week with curriculum academics, all of that. And all of it is tying into things like this. And something needs to be done. Interventionist, number one. I know we got to have certified teachers, but we got certified teachers that don't necessarily know how to do their job. I'm sorry. Training, they need some training. And some of it is tied to the interventionist work. I know that for a fact in some of the schools. And so I'm going to support this, but I think there needs to be some drastic changes made soon. And we need checks and balances and professional development. That's where I'm going to end it, right there.
I haven't commented, but one thing I would suggest to my colleagues is pick up the superintendent's job responsibilities, duties and responsibilities. This is 100% on, falls up under Superintendent Jones. And we as the board, he's our one employee. All our concerns as it relates to everything that falls up under his, his responsibilities and his duties. Hold him accountable. We as a board cannot dictate certain things. And all of this falls upon the Superintendent Jones. He's responsible for the hiring, he's responsible for the data, the academics. When individuals are hired, you're hired as a leader. Every good leader will tell you they do not have everything that they need, but they make it work. I would love for individuals to make it work. Deal what you have, get out of the office. Sometimes you got to get a rolling cart, you got to be sitting in the hallways. Lead from wherever you are. This situ, this, this particular position right here, what I like about it, she looks qualified. That I appreciate. And the goal is to see results. So I will be supporting this, but I'll be supporting it with the expectation and as a HR chair, that this doesn't happen again. We have good conversation, forward information, and we need to see data improving. We need to really look into returns on investments. This is an investment. And I just ask you Superintendent Jones, you and all those who are underneath you, that accountability is coming. And it starts with you. Seeing no further questions? In this discussion, the motion to approve the personal recommendation would be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booths?
Yes.
President McNeil?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, Trustee Runcor. Seven yes, zero no. Mr. Jones?
Madam Chair, uh, point of information.
Is this being approved tonight or is it being advanced for the next meeting? The way I read, I read his motion, it will be approved tonight.
Is the board comfortable with it being approved tonight? Were you all aware of that? Everything was being approved or not and not being forward on, you know?
We didn't catch that word, approved.
But it, it got approved tonight.
Okay.
It's important.
Okay, so moving forward, everyone know that everything on this agenda is not being approved to go to the regular meeting. It's actually being approved.
Right.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So my rash, my reason for bringing that to everyone's attention is because we're going to be approving more. So my rash, my reason for bringing that to everyone's attention is because we're gonna be approving more things, and I just want everyone to have that understanding. All right. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I seek a motion in a second from the board to approve Resolution one point one six, approval of first, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I went, I went ahead.
One point one five?
Forgive me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I seek a motion in a second from the board to approve Resolution one point one five, authorization to approve healthcare services contract agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve item one point fifteen.
So, okay, y'all say at the same time, who's supported?
Don't matter.
Ms. Perkins, so it has been, um, properly moved, and second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, there will be a, uh, we will conduct a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Boos?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
President McNeil?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Myself, Trustee Rutherford. It's been approved seven to zero. Mr. Jones?
Yes. I seek a motion in a second from the board to approve Resolution one point one six, approval of First Amendment to Shonda Cleese CFO contract.
Madam Chair?
Trusty, Trusty King?
I, I move to approve item one point sixteen.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Trustee King and supported by the entire board, except me, by, um, I think Luna, Treasurer Luna. Is there any discussion? No discussion?
I just had a question.
Please, yes.
So this is, this is the date, the correct date, March thirty first?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, my question, oh, go ahead, will you finish?
I was, yeah.
Okay, I, my, I have concerns about this, I've, but I've shared it with, uh, Mr. Jones, and, um, I, I would love to see a month to month, because according to Mr. Jones, uh, G I S D are interviewing individuals at the particular, at this point in time, and he wasn't opposed to that. So I told him I would bring a month to month on this because of proving this all the way up until March thirty first, and they're in the process of hiring someone. I mean, I, if someone can explain how that would make sense to us having two CFOs, which are shared services, I would, I would be here to listen. Mr. Jones?
Uh, it, it wasn't that I wasn't in agreement with you on that, uh, when we had the conversation. I understood where you were coming from, however, when we think about if, and when a person comes on, we still need that person to understand our books and understand how things are, are running and, and going. And I would not want them to learn that from the individuals that are under the CFO.
Right.
I would want them to learn that from the person that's currently with us. That's the reason why we went out to March. However, the folks that are currently being interviewed by the I S D are not a hundred percent a shoe in. So it, we, we, it may not, they may not work out. So I don't wanna put us in a situation to where if we do get a new CFO, I don't have time to make the transition happen, and then our CFO is just, the one we currently have is out the door.
So I see, um, I see Vice President McIntyre, I wanted to finish my thought. The purpose of extending her contract was for the audit. That's what we approved, we extended her contract so that we could get through the audit. So with us, we haven't received the audit readout. So I guess my concern is how are we extending it, and we don't, we, we don't have the findings from the audit. I don't think the auditor will be able to read out to December. I think she has some things preventing her from reporting out this month. Just a question. Vice President McIntyre, go ahead.
Well, I just wondered, just as a, just a general point of information, how that answers the question of, um, we need the transition period, but why, why does that mean that we can't do it month to month? I mean, it, it doesn't. So what's the difference between doing a contract through March thirty first versus just doing a month to month contract that doesn't meet the needs that you just stated? I, am I missing something?
Go ahead, you can, you can answer, Mr. Jones. I see, uh, President McIntyre, um, McNeil.
So we're, we're, we're anticipating, so the, the auditor is coming in December, but we are anticipating that hopefully we can have someone within the next month or so. However, we, we're, we're anticipating needing that time to support the new CFO that's coming in. So I, I mean, to look at it as a month to month would mean that I would be coming back every month asking for this contract to be extended. Um, if the board decides that that's what you wanna do, that's, that's up to the board, but I would rather make sure I have enough space to continue working, um, and to get things done. I, I wouldn't wanna continue to come back. That's, that's my opinion though, and, but the board makes the final decision. And if we're month to month, I, I, I would have to, I didn't talk that over with the contracted person to see if that person would be open to a month to month. That's still the board's decision, and the contracted person, it, it's, it's up to the board. So I, I, I just haven't had that conversation, but I would not want to come back, uh, every month to ask the board to amend this, uh, contract. That's, that's just my opinion.
Can I just say thank you for that information? That gives me information so that I can think about this and understand the situation.
Thank you.
President McNeil?
Uh, yes, I really agree with the March thirty first, twenty twenty six. You cannot expect the person of this profile to sit on needles and pen for thirty days and hope you give me another thirty days, and hope you give me another thirty days, putting this district at risk who has done an outstanding job, then you got to need grace period in for training. So, uh, I am going to support this because thirty days from now, somebody else can get this person, and we're not ready to risk this district, uh, for that. Uh, to give a person thirty days with this, this is not a Kelly girl job. Anybody can walk in here and do this job. And we went through this, clinging up this district. And I don't, as the president, I don't wanna risk putting this district in this type of dilemma in the midst of all these other things that we got on our plate. We need a CFO. And if March thirty first come and we have not got a person can fulfill this position, then we'll look at it again. So I support this, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with supporting this to, uh, March, uh, only because it's not just, there's a mutual benefit on both sides. If, if I'm a new CFO coming on, which is not determined at the moment, right? So we don't have the actual candidate per se, we don't have approval, we haven't had that yet, right?
Can I answer you?
Yeah, go ahead.
The contract can end anytime, end the contract.
Right, I, that's where.
So I still wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
So if you decided tomorrow, even if you vote for March, you're not.
Yeah.
You're not stuck into March, all right? So you can end the contract.
Anytime, right.
But we're hoping that we can extend out and not come back to the board until March.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, to answer.
Hundred percent. So I, I, I would just say, let's say in that same case, if I'm a new CFO and I come in in January and I only need January to February, or I come in December, December to February, and that's a good enough time, we can end the contract at, at that point. I think it helps, uh, us as a district where we have that overlap to allow for proper training, so there is no ball dropped, uh, from the momentum we're, we're building. Um, but also, in, in fact, that, uh, we built a new high school. That, that is, that, that's important to make sure we have our stuff in order. Um, in financial piece, if we have an overlap of leadership and we don't have that, that time to, uh, develop and, um, professionally in that case, we run the risk of having problems down the line and messing up our timeline to deserve, I mean, for our community to get the high school they deserve. Uh, so I, I would hundred percent agree to, uh, extending this out to March thirty first at the moment. Uh, hopefully we get a, a good candidate from the I S D, uh, for that shared services, uh, and just look forward to that partnership. But I, I think this, this covers us, and also will cover the individual coming in to allow for proper professional development, so they are able to stay, because they'll be feel confident into what they know.
Madam Chair?
Treasurer Luna?
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll be supporting this tonight too. So what President McNeil said, if we're gonna be doing this every month, number one, that's just like, that, it's not stability for our very important position. And if I'm watching this meeting right now, listening to that, that would give me angst, and I, I might not wanna continue the contract. But this March thirty first stability and timeline, number one, that gives us someone who knows our finances really well, then that signals to this person, hey, we wanna keep you as much, as long as we can, so we hire someone to replace her. So I'll be supporting this, and it's a Trustee King's point. We're about to leverage and invest a hundred plus million dollars, probably more like one twenty, on this new high school. And we need someone who knows the numbers to be there as we, you know, do that process. So to me, it's a no brainer, and I'll be supporting tonight.
Anyone else? All right, I'll wrap it up. My rationale behind this is this CFO has made some horrendous mistakes. And you are, if you read the audit, you should see that. As board members, we are responsible for the finances of this district. When you read a report with misleading information, that goes to the chief financial officer. When you have dollars you can't account for, you are, that is serious. When you do not balance your books every thirty days, like the CFO stated she was doing, an auditor would not come in and give corrective actions. It just seems like my colleagues like to look the other way with things that's going to come back and bite this district. But I would definitely be voting no on this. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be remiss if I, if I didn't comment, I mean, say something about that, because I, I don't want it to be, uh, in the public where, uh, we get Flint Community Schools finances in disarray, which is, which is truly inaccurate. And then once we have, I look forward to the audit report, um, in December, uh, even when it's published for public to view, um, even the auditor stated four years ago, we, it was horrendous. Now, right, we have, we had the CFO, uh, due to, you know, uh, due to practices there, we, we're in much better shape. Were there mistakes made? Hundred percent. There is nobody i- i- inside this world that can say they have a perfect, perfect hundred percent accounting thing, that's right. Like, there are some human mistakes that were made. Now, were they egregious human mistakes that to the fact that it, it puts us in a liability and, and, um, financial distress? No, that, that is not the outcome of the fi, the findings that's there. Those are a simple, uh, where managerial accounting has to be tightened up and assured, which is the purpose of having an audit, to ensure that we're accountable to our, um, our percentage of practices that we have. But I, I will be remiss if we, we're, uh, allowing, uh, the, the, the comment around egregious or that, that gives some kind of signal that, uh, Flint Community Schools in financial distress and, and, not in distress, but, uh, financial troubles or, um, uh, inappropriate things that happen in finances, I, I would be remiss to that, because that, that will present, uh, too many issues than what we have. We have worked tirelessly since arriving on this board, and, you know, prior to, to fix finances. Uh, and we've been making strides. Were there errors made? Yes, hundred percent. Uh, we, we've had a couple errors, uh, but have we been rectifying? Yes. And then seeing that there was swift corrective actions, uh, made towards the report, uh, I, I'm excited for the, uh, audit report, just to have dialogue and conversation, but I, I would still be remiss if we allow, uh, to, to the public to, to, to think that we were financially troubled. That's all my comments.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yeah, I, uh, I have to concur with Trustee King, um, believe it or not, no, teasing. It is unprofessional and inaccurate to make those statements about our current finances or about the person, uh, the CFO who is in charge of them, and I sincerely apologize to this individual. Uh, just not the, the, the opinion of the board, and especially not of this board member. Um, and it's, like I said, irresponsible and inaccurate.
Point of information. Point of information. Did you not hear me, this person say that it was her opinion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion. When employees don't get paid, that's a problem. Now, my colleagues can state whatever they wanna state.
Point of information.
Go ahead.
Did, did, did employee miss, um, uh, uh, explain what you mean by, if you can, explain what you mean by, uh, missed payment.
When you, when, when you have funds coming out of your account at six o'clock in the morning, and you don't get paid to five o'clock or four thirty in, at night, then that's a problem. Yes.
Did the employees end up getting paid?
Their checks bounced.
Did they end up getting their payment after?
At five, however you wanna put it, 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 they did not, the CFO did not do her portion. Point of order. So let's call it. What's your, what's your point of order?
My point of order is that we give everybody respect. We do not take our people personnel well and slash it down like we are doing here. That person is not here. The, the issue on the table is are we going to renew this contract?
Point of information.
Point of information. What is your point?
Are you aware that we're in discussion?
I'm saying that we have.
Are you aware that we're, yes or no?
Point of information. Uh, point, point of information, are you aware that we took an oath? We sit here and said we would give everybody respect. We said.
No one's been disrespected.
You are disrespecting this person.
Point of information.
Call for the question.
There's been a call for the question. And call for the question with real roll call vote, Trustee King.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Point of order. Did trustee, or did President McNeil have the floor?
She was finished.
Wouldn't she, okay.
Secretary Perkins? It's called for the question, yes or no?
Yes.
Burn, uh, Boos?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Seeing no further discussion, as I call your name, please vote yes or no for the approval of First Amendment to, uh, Shonda Chan, uh, Cleese's contract. Treasurer Luna?
Point of memory.
Yes.
Point of order.
We're voting on, or, did you say that we're voting on the?
They said call the question.
Calling the question?
Yeah, every seven, zero, yeah. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
President McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Boos?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Myself, Trustee Rutherford, no. Um, contract passes, six yes, one no. Miss, um, that concludes. Yeah. In your packet on page twenty-three is information, item two point five, retirements and resignations. Does any board member have any questions? Mr. Jones, you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right. Seeing no further business, I declare the Human Resource Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I turn the floor over to Treasurer Luna for the Finance and Operating Committee of the whole portion of the agenda. It is now seven fifty-seven.
Thank you, trustee. I now call the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting to order at seven fifty-seven P M. And I'll call Mr. Jones to present action for the board.
Okay, I, I seek a motion in a second from the board to approve eleven point two one, eleven point two two, and eleven point two three, uh, authorization to install new circuits for the ovens at Northwestern, at Potter, and at Freeman.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Vice President McIntyre and supported by trustee Boos, okay, Boos. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, thank you for having a, an accurate, uh, proposal with the right funds in it. How, this is just, uh, you know, to the overall food funds. How are we doing? Are we on target to spend that money like we need to for improvements? Uh, 'cause I know that, that sometimes that is kind of difficult to you.
So thanks for asking that question. I'm going to ask Ms. Cleese, who's here, uh, online, uh, to speak to that, Ms. Cleese.
Make sure you unmute.
Uh, did you hear the question?
No, I repeat it.
Would you?
Tell me you have a louder, more.
So, uh, the board is asking, um, are, how are we doing with spending the federal, uh, lunch, lunch program or meal program funds? Are we on target? Are we spending those funds down? What's going on with those funds?
For the, um, food service.
Yes.
Access fund out. Yes, we are on target with spending those funds. We exited out over a million, and now we're down to about, uh, four hundred thousand dollars.
Y'all set?
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion or questions?
No.
All right. So the motion was to approve eleven point two one, point two three, and two two. When I call your name, please say yes or no, Trustee King.
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
President McNeil?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee Boos?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And myself, yes, the motion passes, seven yes, zero no.
All right, that was easy. Seeing no further discussion, wait, sorry.
Turn it over to me.
Yeah. All right, seeing no further discussion, I now declare the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting adjourned at 7:59. I turn the floor back over to President McNeil for the Board Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Proceed, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve resolution. Ah, let me stop. So this particular contract, speaking to the CEO of the Flint Center of Educational Excellence, we talked today and the CEO, Dr. Jamerson, wants to pull this and just do the services as a partner and not charge the district for the community engagement of this work. So I wanted, I wanted to first say thank you to Dr. Jamerson for his trusted support in community engagement on the high school work. So this work will be done, but this work will be done without a cost.
Amen.
Yeah.
Great job.
So wanted to pull that, we talked today right before I came in. So just, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that and you did not have to vote for this work.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jones. And on that note, does anybody want to have a comment as relates to this? Proceed, trustee Luna?
Well, first off, thank you, Dr. Jamerson.
And I'll be frank, the, the way I say things at the board table is very different sometimes behind closed doors. And I had to cut up a couple times with a few people.
Wish it was needed.
On the high school planning committee, and I will say, I'm seeing the feedback, I'm hearing one from, you know, Dr. Coleman, Mr. Jones, our folks from Plant Moran, et cetera. And I'm just happy to see that there's, that there's things that are changing for the better as we create this new high school campus, so. Appreciate it.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes, and so I just wanted to say on behalf of myself that I really appreciate everything that Dr. Jamerson has done. And I just want to reiterate my love and support and to also reiterate my regret at any missteps or misstatements I may have made along the way about the, the, the development and the origins of the Center for Excellence. Despite my misgivings of like how it structurally came about, I think that they've been a great partner. They've listened, they've taken constructive criticism and vice versa, given it as, as well. And they are truly a great partner. And I, that's, that's all I've ever wanted, was partnership and cooperation and collaboration.
And what?
Oh. And so I just wanted to, to give a shout out and say thank you so much. We couldn't ask for a better partner. Well, except for Mr. Thomas Parker sitting in the back, who's also another wonderful partner. I want to give a shout out to.
He all right.
To him, to him as well. So thank you, thank you so, and we have a lot of other partners as well, not just, just those two. But just, I want to keep it germane to the motion.
Are there any more comments?
Madam Chair.
Trustee King?
I just quickly say, now that's how you partner, right there.
That's, that's it. Thank you. And that was my final thought. It's showing that we did a workshop together, Dr. Jamerson and Mr. Thomas, as they support us, as that. And this is what partnership is about. It's not always coming in, taking, it's about giving sometime. Give something back and let your community know that you care. So once again, thank you, Mr. Jamerson. Proceed, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I would, I would comment to that and say, there's, there's two sides to that. Number one, we do appreciate Dr. Jamerson and the Center for the work that they're doing. The other side to that, that we talked about is although we're not paying you, we still expect and hope that the work is going to stay at the level. That we expect for people we are paying to be top notch work and to do the things that this board is requesting to be done. So if we have a partner that's coming on that's saying, we're going to give you top notch work and you're not paying for it, then I'm going to expect those that are getting paid to do top notch work continuous as well. So, and we did talk about that and he's still committed to making sure that the work don't fail because he's not getting, they're not getting paid for it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well, that he's not going to be backing up from the work. So thank you, thank you, Dr. Joyce, for that. And, all right.
21.10.
All right. Let's see if Stan, if StanTech will not make us pay them. Let's see how that goes.
Okay, StanTech, let's go.
All right, all right. Going once?
Going twice.
Okay, all right. I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve action item 21.10, approval of StanTech, to StanTech, First Amendment supplemental agreement.
Madam Chair.
I move to approve item 21.10.
Support. It'd been properly moved in seconds, there are any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we would conduct a roll call vote to approve 21.10. Board members, I call your name, please say yes or no for the record. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booz?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, McNeil, seven, seven yes, zero no. Thank you very much. We are now moving into board comments. We have comments from, one comment from each board member. Anybody have a comment?
Yeah.
Trustee Luna?
I just want to give a shout out to our friends at MGS Consultants. They had the School Aid Subcommittee Chair in the Cube, was it last Monday?
Yeah, it was Monday.
It was last Monday. And the reason that's so important, you know, obviously, we're in the business of educating students and powering teachers, but we have all these properties that are still vacant. You know, we knocked down Washington, he's so long fellow, he's so keen. But having those conversations, having those folks see what our issues are, helps us leverage more funding, some of our building, because every dollar we spend on a vacant property is one less dollar in the classroom. And then two, if we get money from them in the state of Michigan, that may encourage other funders to also leverage additional dollars towards that. So hoping that we can knock down more than just four, but I think it's a good step, I thought it was a good meeting. So Omar and Jeremiah, thank you for.
Thank you very much, yes. Anyone else like to make a comment? Trustee Perkins?
I just wanted to reiterate on our Traverse City trip, the, just kudos to the team. They did an outstanding job and we got a lot of great feedback from the conference itself. Brother Thomas, Thomas Parker and Dr. Janelle Jamerson showed out. And everybody else was on point, so I just take my hat off to all of us, thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, trustee Rutherford. First of all, I do appreciate my colleagues and I have decided to be intentional as a board member moving forward. In the state of our country, being slack will cause someone else to err. It's not about saying what's easy to the ear. It's about saying what needs to be said so that we as a whole can move forward. It's best to fix a situation before it become a disaster. So I say to you all, as an elected member on this board, I'm going to listen. I'm going to trust you, but I'm going to verify. I have a strong background in finances and finances are very important. It will either make you or break you. And I ask my colleagues to take it serious. It's not a matter of person being your friend. You have to hold people accountable. And accountability is not an attack, it's to help improve each other. Thank you.
Trustee King?
Yeah, I would quickly say that congratulations to our Board of Education for presenting in Traverse City. That's our first time ever, if I know, Flint Community Schools Board of Education actually presenting at the, our State Association Conference. Even just talking, same, you know, same as trustee Perkins here, talking to other colleagues across the state, recognizing the progress of Flint. You know, we had a, we had a reputation, we had a reputation coming in. But seeing over the years of the progress we've made and then able to talk about it and really share our learnings and really able to help other communities about and using that as an example. Our own Flint town was amazing and being a part of that with you all is, is just amazing, just being, being a service with you all. I would also say that to my colleagues, always, you know, I've been saying it for a while, our words has the, there's responsibility behind our words. Our words has the power to build up or tear down the district in any kind of way. We can mean what we say, but I, you know, I always ask my colleagues to not say it mean in every way that we do things. Because at the end of the day, we're all human beings, we all have emotions, we all have, we are, you know, we put our clothes on the same way and similar different fashions. There's a way we can operate with fidelity and expectations, but our, I just being mindful of the power of our words. We see it in today from our national, our national leadership, where the words have powers to start wars. Whether it's wars internationally or wars within, as we see, just, you know, you have my commitment to always try to be a diplomatic in my approaches. But you know, I'm always asking my questions in a way, but also being caring behind those that have to answer those questions. Because at the end of the day, we're still human beings, we still should be treated with respect in how we, how we operate with one another, withholding that same expectation. Thank you.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything, I'll try, I'll try to keep this short. But trustee Rutherford and trustee King just reminded me about Traverse City, which seems like months ago, I don't know why. But again, you know, not to, to reiterate all this fulsome praise for Dr. Jamerson and, and Mr. Parker, but they really went above and beyond in terms of traveling to Traverse City and collaborating and making a joint presentation with us. And like trustee King said, it was the first time, you know, we've been the ones on the stage making, making the news in a, in a good, positive, and impactful way. And I just want to say that I have an inkling of hope and encouragement for the first time in a, in a new type of way. I have been asking for people to, to be more cognizant and mindful of the, the democratic process and the, 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 the open school system, the, the, the public school system and to consider themselves a part of it, not as us as the board standing apart versus the community or versus the teachers or versus, but all of us as being part of the pool. And I see that coming in a nascent way, slightly to fruition. I mean, it's, there's still a lot of work to be done. But given the current state of politics on the federal and even the state level, we are working so hard with so little with what we have. And I think we're doing an amazing job. I think there's just so many positives. I mean, there's definitely been missteps along the way in ways that we can, we can improve and there's, there's room for criticism, to be sure. But let's, let's do this, you know what I mean? It's, 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 there's so much negativity out in the world. And I think the few positive things you can, you can see in the United States are on the local level. And I think Flint is actually leading the way in terms of finding those little moments or those little areas where we can kind of get in the cracks and make, make a difference and try to do what we can with what we have. And let's, let's keep on that path forward and, and, you know, keep fighting for democracy in our, in our, our public schools. And I'm really proud of us, I'm, I'm proud of each and every one of you. We're all different, we all have different personalities and we all know. But we've, we've been doing, we've been doing a lot with a short amount of time. And we've got a small window to make this happen, so thank you.
Is there anyone else before I do final comments? Trustee Booz?
Yes, I was thinking, there's one thing that was not on our agenda. And that was making a motion to have a hosted meeting at 5:30.
Make motion in the comments.
Okay, go in the comments. I have no other comment.
We can put that in through for our next agenda.
Okay. I'm just, I just want to say this, I have been serving on the board a year this month. It's been a journey and I do have respect for each one of my trustees that's, that's working, that's on this board. I will continue to do that. And I think we need to learn how to be patient and, you know, accept each other's comments and don't take them personally.
Thank you.
You know, so we can move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? I am going to comment to the public because statements comes out. I want to assure the public, each one of these board members that's sitting here, including myself, have masters, business administration, own a corporation for 20 years. I manage General Motors. I have a master in public administration, computer program, you name it, I can own it. There's no such, we should be friends. And when we're making decisions, we're making sound decisions. I trust these people. Everybody here, we works together. My leadership style is different. I lead by coaching, that's how I got to be at the top of where I'm at. You coach people into being correct. I don't believe in punitive. This board do not need chastising or how to manage themselves. You govern yourself. You took that oath by yourself. But I would not sit here and allow anybody to say that this board is not doing what it's supposed to do because we don't do punitive. And I tell Superintendent Jones all the time, I don't do punitive. I do correction and coaching. That's what's wrong with our school systems, too much punitive, too much pulling down. Errors are made, findings. I own a corporation for 20 years. It's their job to come in, find something, they can find something wrong with the corporate. That's what audit is about. You make errors and you correct them. That's what they do. They love it. But they, that's why they give you correction, action to take place. One person cannot run this district, one person can't run that school without making errors. If a person's in here that don't make errors, can criticize and pull each other down, this might not be the good place for you because we pick people up and lift them up. So on that note, this district is doing very well, we have a great partnership. We have not done anything out of order. Do we make mistake? Yes. But my role as the president, I would not sit here and allow people to think that people are just doing something because somebody asked them, they did it because they read their package, they come to their workshop, they read their meetings, and they participate in what we have done. On that note, the next board meeting will be held November 19, 2025, here at the Cube. So far, this meeting is adjourned at 8:17. Yeah.